Good evening, everyone, and we have a full house here, so it's so good to see all you here. I'll call this regular city council meeting to order. May I have the roll call, please?
Here.
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 Here. And tonight, we have three folks for the open forum. I would ask that you keep your comments to approximately three minutes. And we will start with Mac Walters. Would you please come forward? State your name and address and make sure to sign the document before you leave.
Yes, my name is Mac Walters. I live at, my business is 2626 East 82nd Street in Bloomington, 55425. I'm here tonight. My brother and I had purchased a property at 6821 Cedar Avenue. Initially as an investment property. It's had vacant for over a year, and it was foreclosed on. People went in there and stole some pipe work out of it, so we went in and rehabbed it. Put new pipe in there, put new, all-new windows, all-new carpet. Well, my brother and I also own an in-home healthcare company called All Home Health that works for disabled adults and children in their home. My parents started it back in 1988. Well, we figured since we're in the healthcare profession, we would stay in the healthcare profession, so we had an idea of taking this four-unit apartment complex that we rehabbed, and instead of doing rental, we'd do a residential home care for elderly adults. So, we approached the city, and the problem is with the zoning, so that's why I'm here. I'm working with Melissa to get the proper documents to her, so it'll go to the planning commission, so we can get the process started, so hopefully in the future, I can be on the agenda, so we can actually discuss possible changes to the zoning, so we can actually do the residential home care there. The reason why we would like to do this is there's, on the north, to the north of the property, and south, there's single-family homes, and then across the street, it's all single-family homes. And working there, I was able to talk to some of the residents, and they said that, we told them our idea, and they were very happy that we're finally fixing it up, and that it wouldn't be a rental, it would be a care facility that would have staff in there 24 hours a day, and it'd be well-maintained and well-taken care of, and there wouldn't be a ton of traffic coming through there. So hopefully, we'll also be back here, and I'll be on the agenda, so we can actually discuss this.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming tonight. Appreciate that. The next speaker we have this evening is Roger, is it S.A.?
Osi.
Osi. Roger? Hi. Thank you.
Welcome, you gentlemen. I know what you're doing.
Good work.
My name is Roger Osi. I live at 6824 10th Avenue South. And the reason I'm here this evening is today, five garbage trucks came by my front porch to pick up garbage for the citizens. And on a next week, there will be 10 garbage trucks coming by my door, because it's the recycle day. And in the summer, there will be 15 coming by my house when they have the yard waste. This is my situation. Those are 50 and 60,000-pound trucks, maybe 70 or maybe more. When you have 15 trucks running by my house on the street of Richfield, there's got to be some damage. Okay? And only one of those carriers is propane. If Richfield has one carrier contracted, and they determine that all the trucks will be propane, it's not only a saving to the carrier, I think propane is now about 2.61, and diesel is over 4. It should be a savings to the carrier. In addition, I was standing near one of those trucks, and the exhaust came right out over where I was standing, and that's got to be a situation of air pollution. I would just ask the city to do a little analysis on cost, and do a little analysis on saving streets, and run one contractor, and I understand it would cost no more. I was in Maplewood today. They have one carrier, and they have a situation where the customer does not do the arranging ahead of time. The city tells them, but they claim they are very satisfied with one carrier system. Thank you, and I want to thank Sue Sandahl for helping me make my will. I'm just about 80 years old, and she is pretty good. I will say, if you need a good lawyer, you go ahead and get her.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
You're very kind.
I'll charge you for that little bit there, Sandahl.
Thank you. Thank you for coming, Mr. --
I thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Oh, we do. We do. You should stay for a little while and watch the presentations.
I thank you, Sue.
You're welcome.
I'll give you my letter.
Okay. Okay. Thanks. Appreciate that. Thank you very much.
How much did that commercial cost?
If you want to read it, we'll pass it. Well, I've asked all of you to please --
I want you to know Mr. Osi is a retired minister.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for coming tonight.
It's not my first time at council either.
Oh, okay.
I was here for another time when you were bringing in liquor stores. And that was when they were bringing in liquor stores.
Yeah.
And my family has an incredible problem with liquor.
Yeah.
Too much of it.
Yeah.
My take on it was that for every dollar you make, it's been enormous amounts from the child. I better be flat than you all, who you say.
Could you all please stand and join us in the pledge up here? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's not often we get someone so delightful to come address us. At this time, I would ask the council's approval of the minutes of the special city council work session of January 28, 2014.
So moved.
I'm not done yet.
Oh.
I've got a list here. The regular city --
That's right.
I was breathing. Regular city council meeting of January 28, 2014, the special city council work session of January 29, 2014, and the special council work session of January 31, 2014. You gonna move?
Ready?
Yep.
So moved.
I'll second it.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Tonight, we have a lot of really great presentations. We have our first presentation, which is the Officer of the Year, and I see we have our Director of Public Safety up here to present that. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council members. I'm going to have Officer Sean Majewski come up and stand next to me at the podium here. Face the camera.
City Council, Madam Mayor and City Council, as you know, at the end of each year, our sergeants get together, and they select an Officer of the Year. The selection is based on the officer's outstanding performance throughout the previous year, and the sergeant's belief that the selected officer has demonstrated extraordinary dedication to duty and service to the community. By unanimous decision, the sergeants have selected Officer Sean Majewski as the 2013 Officer of the Year. Sean is a nine-year veteran of the Police Department who excelled in areas of leadership, traffic safety, and enforcement, dedication to the department, and contributions to the community. Sean is recognized as an informal leader within the Police Department. He takes this role seriously, and he worked nearly one-third of his shifts this past year as a field training officer, as we all know is a very critical component of the department. Sean dedicated over 480 hours of his time to the Field Training Officer Program, and we're going to see some of the results of that shortly here, when I swear in our new officers. Besides being a top performer in the area of traffic safety and enforcement, Sean has the ability to detect criminal activity during his stops. For example, one of Sean's traffic stops led to a felony-level narcotic arrest and federal-level identity theft charges. In another instance, he identified potential suspects in a string of metro-wide business burglaries. And finally, in another instance, Sean, one of Sean's stops led to the arrest of a suspect in numerous residential burglaries. However, Sean is also dedicated to the community. Sean is coordinator of our Richfield Police Explorer Program, which I believe they're standing out in the lobby now. In this role, Sean mentors and coaches the youth of our community who have an interest in entering the field of law enforcement. Sean has dedicated hundreds of hours, often on his own time, to the Explorer Program, and the program gives back to the community in such events as the Fourth of July, Night to Unite, Penfest, Urban Wild Half Marathon, Heroes and Helpers, and Unity and Community, and many more. The community contributions by these explorers would not be possible without the dedication and hard work of Sean. Another vital function the explorers do are alcohol and compliance checks, and under Sean's direction and supervision, the explorers conducted over 120 of these compliance checks, and as we all know, these help keep our communities safe. So, it is with great pleasure, I present to you the 2013 Richfield Police Officer of the Year, Officer Sean Majewski.
Thank you. Thank you. That's so wonderful. Tom?
Do you have a thing?
I do.
Okay.
Is that what you want?
Well, for Jim Coons. Why don't you go ahead and read that?
Well, I think we need to get Jim up front here first.
Okay. This is item two? This is item two, recognition of Jim Coons, who is retiring from the police reserves after 50 years of service. You're here.
I've taken orders from you for a long time.
Jim Coons started with the Richfield Police Reserve Unit in 1963. Back in '63, the reserve unit was then called the Civil Defense Rescue Squad. Through the years, Jim has seen many changes within the reserve unit. However, he has continued his volunteer service to the city until he retired at the rank of major in September of 2013. Police reserves such as Jim serve this community as young, sung heroes of the Police Department. They serve as a critical component to the Police Department operations, and they help keep our communities safe. Jim has been one of the primary operators of the Police Department's communication van, which is used as our command center at major events such as Fourth of July, Penfest, VIP details, natural disasters, crime scenes, and countless other tasks. Over the years, Jim has donated thousands of hours away from his family and friends, many times on the Fourth of July, in service to the city. When Jim is not volunteering his time with the city, he works for the Hennepin County Public Safety Facility as a detention technician. So it is with great honor, I would like to present Jim Coons with an award acknowledging 50 years of dedicated volunteer service to the city of Richfield.
May I continue?
Yes, you will. With the swearing-in of our new police officers, please.
I'd like to introduce you to our three newest hires. They just completed Sunday 14 weeks of very strenuous, tough field training officer program, and I don't think they want to repeat it, do you? No. We have Officer Matt Swanson. Matt, raise your hand so they know which one you are. Okay. Officer Matt Swanson, he's from St. Francis, Minnesota. He's currently working on his bachelor's degree from the University of Minnesota. Matt came to Richfield with three years' experience as a police reserve officer with the Anoka County Sheriff's Office. On the end there, on the far end, is Alex Blaine. Alex Blaine graduated from Annandale High School, is also working on completing his bachelor's degree at the University of Minnesota. Alex served as a police reserve officer in our neighboring city to the south, Bloomington. And as a special note, I assume he might be here, Alex's father is a police officer in Anoka City Police Department. And then, in the middle there, we have Andy Layer. Andy spent the majority of his informative years in Taiwan, where his family was missionaries. Andy is able to speak Mandarin Chinese.
Oh, great.
Andy, you want to speak a little there for us? If we ever need an interpreter in Mandarin Chinese, we have it on the department now. Andy is also a seven-year veteran of the Army National Guard, where he did a tour, deployment, active-duty deployment in Kuwait. So if I could have the three of you turn and face me, please? And if I could have you raise your right hand? And repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear to support the Constitution and the laws of the United States. The state of Minnesota? And the charter and the ordinances of the city of Richfield. And to discharge faithfully these duties devolving upon me as a police officer for the city of Richfield to the best of my judgment and ability. Congratulations. Now, I hate to say you're going to lose a lot of people out of your audience.
We'll give them a couple of minutes, but this is so wonderful. What great things to have. It's wonderful we have presentations like this, and I know there's cake and treats in the back, so go enjoy that with the officers and your family, please.
A lot of pictures to be taken back there.
Yes, yes. Enjoy this. Thank you. Thank you so much. And we'll give you a couple of minutes to move out of here.
Boy, Madam Mayor, those young police officers sure look pretty young, don't they?
Yeah, they do. Yeah, just kids. Just kids in our house.
Have them graduate at high school.
Yeah, I know. Give him a minute to move out.
Mayor, I don't know if you've noticed, but that's quite the uniform that the command staff has today. Don't you think they're really spiffed up?
Yeah. You clean up pretty good. It's nice to see them all dressed up like that in here. I know, we don't see that enough, do we? Do we? Well, we have, the next item is actually the council discussion, and I've got a couple of things I just want to bring up, and I don't think it will mind too much to go talk about this. You know, in our last city council session, we approved a lot of social service agencies that we use with some CBG grant monies for the city. And my thoughts were, and I thought that perhaps because Councilmember Garcia is big on the social service, it would be nice if they could come in and do a five or 10 minutes somewhere along the road in the whole scope of a year, somewhere. I mean, there's only about five of them, I believe, that we have, and it would be nice for the residents to know, we're giving them dollars. What are they doing for Richfield? And a lot of them are doing some really great things, and maybe we should be highlighting them more. So I just thought, when we don't have presentations like three in a row, it might be nice to hear from some of those. So it's just a thought.
Good idea.
And I just want to let people know that we are continuously continuing our efforts and going paperless, although I still have a few papers. I noticed on the study sessions, that seems to be the issue of, we don't have papers for there, and we don't have access to computers there. So I know that I printed at home, a lot of people printing at home, and that's just shifting the burden. So maybe, I know there's just one more thing to put on the docket to figure out. I know we're going to figure it out. So if you would put that down. Who has items? A council member? I'll start with Tom Fitz Henry.
Okay, I have a couple ones. I'd like to walk up there for one. I think council got this memo, but basically, it's about clearing out the fire hydrants. Our fire department, the Richfield Fire Department, has decided to be the first department in the country to partner with what they call "C-Click-Fix" on their new platform, Snow Crew. And basically, what it's all about is we're trying to get those fire hydrants cleared out, so that when they arrive on scene, their first order is not to try to find the fire hydrant, to hook up to it. And there's an actual website you can go to. If you're not taking care of the fire hydrant on your property, you can actually go on the website and see if you can solicit somebody to help you out. And that website address is www.snoecrew.org. Again, www.snoecrew.org. And Steve, will that be on our website, this item?
Yes, councilmember, very well.
But I thought it was really interesting. We're the first in the nation to really do this, and if you look at what Richfield's doing, we're really trying to get out to the public and touch out with them electronically. The other thing I wanted to mention, I didn't bring the picture with me, but hats off to the fishing contest. I went down there, and it was a blast. There was at least 40 people when I was down there, thanks to Home Depot. Got to sit on one of their, huh? Well, I went down there early, so I'm sure 125 children showed up for that. Home Depot brought their crew, their buckets. We were sitting on their buckets in the fishing. Did anybody really catch a big fish? Okay. We were more drowning minnows, right? Okay. It was a lot of fun. They had hot chocolate, and the comments I got was interesting, because a lot of people, even the adults, hadn't been fishing. And they saw it as they came by, and we introduced kids to fishing, and we're going to have a great fishing lake. So I really wanted to say hats off to that. It turned out great, and it was a lot of fun. So, thank you.
Thanks. Councilmember, please. Oh, here we go. Morsa.
That's a beautiful sweater, too, councilmember.
I'm very shy and retiring. This was the most recent Richfield sun, and I thought, just to bring it to your attention, we have a Richfield resident who was actually in Sochi for the Olympics, Jessica Schultz. And I noticed in the newspaper when they talked about her, they said she was from Minneapolis, but no, no, she's from Richfield.
Yeah.
So I thought that was interesting, and I hope we're all following her. This is Sweet Streets, and I'm assuming we're going to be mailing these out to residents again. That's the latest thing in terms of what Richfield is promoting about improving our streets. There will be another public open house from the date, I can almost read it.
February 19.
It's Wednesday, February 19, and it's from 4:30 to 6:30, and it will be in the Bartholomew Room, which is the large, large public meeting room behind the council chambers at City Hall. So you're all invited to come if you want to learn about the proposed four-to-three-lane conversions that are coming soon to Richfield. Stay informed, give your opinion, let us know what you think. And then finally, the last one is the open house that our state representative, Melissa Wickland is, excuse me, state senator, is sponsoring, along with Tom Bach, who is the Senate Majority Leader. That will be also in the Richfield Bartholomew Room, and that is Thursday, February 19, from 6:00 to 8:00. So if you want to tell your local legislators, and some of the more powerful legislators, what you think and what you want and what your concerns are, it's an open house. You're welcome to come and share your opinions. Thank you.
What's the date again?
It's February 19, no, I'm sorry, February 13, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and it'll be again at the City Hall in the Bartholomew Conference Room.
Okay. Thank you, Sue. Great information. Councilmember Garcia, do you have things for our council discussion or hats off?
Oh, I just wanted to mention that on February 28, from 5:00 to 7:30 p.m., Veep is having their open house, and they have moved from where they were on Irving and James to 9600 Aldrich Avenue. And we, you know, one of the good things about the move is that the building is big enough that they are housing a hub for Hennepin County services. So, Hennepin County decided to sell Century Plaza, and so they're moving all of their, the services that they provide, you know, for a lot of people with low incomes and health issues, too. So they're moving that to, directly to the communities. So it's going to be probably something that we're going to hear an awful lot about. So plan on attending the 28th, Veep, 9600 Aldrich.
Thank you. Councilmember?
Nothing really laudatory. I do want to thank the mayor and the other council members for the considerations they gave me when I had to be out of town and moving my missing. And I also just want to not apologize, but tell the constituents I was out of town on business, and it wasn't expected, and I apologize for not being here to do my job. But I will add that I had to go to Dallas, and the polar vortex reached Dallas when I was there, and it never got over 25 degrees.
Wow.
I didn't really gain anything, so.
Didn't gain a lot.
But anyhow, thank you for the considerations. I know it's hard. We have a lot of work to do, and I appreciate you, the considerations you gave me in being gone, so, thanks.
Certainly. We'll be catching up. This time, I'd ask council approval of the agenda with two exceptions. We're going to be removing item 6E and 6F for further discussion under item 7. With that, I'd ask for council's approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Home favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The consent calendar, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. For those in the audience, the consent calendar contains several separate items which are acted upon by the city council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and the recommended actions will also have been approved, and no further council actions on those items would be necessary. Tonight, we have a few items on the city council consent calendar, especially now the two have been taken off. We start with item A. Consideration of the approval of setting a public hearing to be held on March 11, 2014 for the consideration of a new on-sale wine and 3.2% malt liquor license for Tehaban Mexican Grill LLC doing business as Fire Up Barbecue at 2 West 66th Street. Item B is consideration of the approval of the first reading of an ordinance amending subsection 21001 relating to city council salaries, and to schedule a second reading for February 25, 2014. Item C is consideration of the approval of a resolution of support for the final alignment of the intercity regional trail as recommended by the Transportation Commission. Item D is consideration of the approval of the purchase orders to Nelson Auto Center in the amount of $106,387.28 for four new Ford Interceptor SUVs. Items E and F have been removed for further consideration. And finally, item G, consideration of the approval of the acceptance of grants and donations received by the Richfield Recreational Services Department, and to authorize the city to administer the funds in accordance with the grant agreements and terms prescribed by the donors. And that would conclude tonight's consent calendar.
I'll move the consent calendar. Second. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The first item -- Opposed? The first item removed was 6E, now into 7, and that was Councilmember Sandal. Would you please?
Sure. I have certainly no objection to approving the amendments to the bylaws for the Transportation Commission. I did have a question, though, of staff. At the top of the bylaws, it says, "The following bylaws and rules of procedure are adopted by the city's Transportation Commission to facilitate the performance of its duties and functions as authorized by the city council." And I don't remember when I served on a commission, we maybe never changed the bylaws, I don't know, that that required a city council approval? Is that something that we've always done? I know the commission itself made recommendation to do it, but does it require the city council to approve the change?
You know, I guess, Councilmember Sandal, members of the city council, I guess, probably as bylaws, they may not require city council approval. Mary, your thought?
Yeah, I, well, my, my thought is that, and I don't know historically what the practice has been for this council for those changes, and maybe it doesn't come up that often. But these are our bodies that are created and authorized by the city council. So any changes, I mean, typically those would occur at the commission level itself. Certainly, you know, I don't know legally whether it would be required to have a city council approval. Certainly bringing that to the council's attention and making the council aware of those changes might, might be a good practice. But without reading into the documents a little bit more, I would say that the commission could probably change those, those bylaws on its own.
Okay. Well, that's what I thought, but I, we just, someone asked the question, and I didn't know the answer, and thought maybe someone from staff would know. With that, I'll, go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry. With that, I'll move approval of Item 6E, which is the approval of the modifications, to the Transportation Commission's bylaws. And all they did was, I think, change their meeting date.
Yep.
Second.
Any other discussion? I do like being informed about it, though. It's a good idea. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Councilmanager, do you have anything to say? Okay. And the next item that was removed is 6F, and that was by Councilmember Garcia and Tom Fitz Henry.
Madam Mayor, this is, this is an item that will designate Veterans Memorial Park as the park for the band shell to be built. And this was, we put, we, we have a citizens committee that is made up of a number of Richfield citizens who come from all different areas of expertise, you know, some architects, some are designers, some are fundraisers, and just folks that have had a lot to contribute to the community. And so we look forward to, for them working. Rick Jabs will be our chair of that committee. And I wanted to mention something, too. I've lived in Richfield over 43 years, and when I first moved to Richfield, I joined a number of commissions, and one of them was the Community Services Commission. And Community Services Commission deals with parks and recreation. And community service, when we, when I was on there in the 80s, that's when we decided that we were going to have what was termed a flagship park. And that was, you know, hailed, I think, by everyone in the city as terrific. This will be the park. And so what we, what do we have in that park? We have two sheets of ice. We have the magicians. We have miniature golf. We have the swimming pool. We have Vets Memorial. We have a lot of July the 4th celebrations. We have our garden, what do you call that, the market?
Yeah, the farmer's market.
We have the farmer's market. We have a lot of events there to celebrate our community, to celebrate our citizens. And, and so this park is a premier park, and it's a park that has been designated. Let me talk about, you know, in terms of the liquor store monies, our own city municipal liquor stores. Let me have a drink here. The municipal liquor money goes for the park and recreation. We have great parks in Richfield, no one will ever say different, because they're parks that are utilized, they're used, they're enjoyed by all the citizenry. And that's made possible through the monies from the municipal liquor store. And the municipal liquor store is, you know, you, you can call that taxpayer money, yes, but it really is just profits from the sale of the, of the liquor. And that goes, those monies go directly into providing the beauty of the parks that we have, equipment, what have you, everything, the upkeep, maintenance, whatever. So when we're going to be spending money for this park, we also have tapped a number of philanthropic organizations that we're going to be asking, writing grants, to ask them to support the band shell. And that includes the Legacy Fund, which is part of the, of the Minnesota supporting of the arts. We also are entertaining, maybe having naming rights to, to raise money for that. And I did, I did a lot of research and came up with, I don't know, at least 15 philanthropic foundations that we will write to and ask for money to support that. Now, is this park going to be, this park will take a lot of time, you know, in terms of making sure that it's going to be the right type of band shell. We're going to listen to, and go and look at other band shells, it's going to be, it's not going to be just done in a tacky way, it's going to, it's, it's really going to take a lot of time, a lot of effort, a lot of study, and a lot of the problems that a lot of people perceive will be mitigated. The acoustics, you know, just a number of things are going to be taken care of. So it's something that, that I think we will wind up utilizing not only, not only for band shell and orchestras, but for other events that the public themselves, if they want to have, you know, a little play by the school system, or, or maybe the schools want to have, you know, something going on there, it's, it's going to be a community park, the community park. And today, Jim Topsonhofer received a call, and it was a terse, angry call, and I can understand that. I mean, you know, that's one thing about our community, we are passionate. But I want to say that, you know, this band shell is being built, and it's, you know, and it's a policy decision that the city council made. Jim Topsonhofer didn't make it, and neither did Steve David. We made that choice. And the bottom line is that the buck stops here. So if people want to write us, you know, we have our, our own city email, they want to call us, please do so. And please, let's have reasonable discussions, because, you know, we can, we can work together and make this happen, so that we can all contribute and be proud of, of this park.
Okay. Councilmember Fitz Henry?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The issue I have with, I, I sit on the noise oversight committee for the city, which is the MAC Noise Airport, and we do a lot of profiling on flights and departures and that. And not saying that this won't work, but I'm on record with the city and the other places saying, we don't put things under the departure path at the airport that are not compatible. And my issue is, I have a hard time understanding, I'm not saying it can't be done, but I have a hard time understanding how we're going to do that, and I can't recommend that we put a band shell under a departure path of 3:00 left at the airport. I know there's ways of mitigating in that, but I have to go what's true and tell the citizens what I truly believe and what I've stood for, and not, you know, buckle on this one. So I would not recommend we put it there due to airport noise. So, that's all I have to say.
Councilmember?
We did, last year, we did a trial test to see what, what the noise levels were at two sites. One was at Vets Memorial Park, where it's being proposed, and the other was at the Lindell Gardens site. And my experience was that the one further away, the Lindell Gardens site, was worse. They were actually turning over the Gardens site. So, you know, life isn't perfect, there's airport noise over the, the band shell that's by Lake, Lake Hurriet. So I think it can work, I think it'll be a real benefit to the whole community, I'm looking forward to seeing it built, and I think we just need to get that RNAV back up and moving, so.
I know that there's been an awful lot of public vetting here, too, about where it should go, and it, and veterans' park always came up first, and this is where the majority of people have said that they wanted. It also has parking facilities that I think are going to be adequate for that, so that we can have those, those programs there. And we know how that fills up at that park, because we, anybody goes to the Fourth of July knows what that's about. So I'm definitely in support of this. Councilmember?
I defer to Tom's experience with the noise oversight, but also agree with his concerns about where you're putting it, and have to agree with him that, that I can't recommend that that's the best place for it.
Okay.
And one of the reasons that, that we're putting it there is because, you know, to put it on the Lindell Gardens site would be, you know, putting it in, in a space that does not belong to the city. And, and if you do that, then you're, you're not able to raise money from, because philanthropic foundations are likely to contribute money if it's in for, in a public site. And, and I think that's a, a big benefit. To put it in, in a place that belongs to a developer, we wouldn't be able to raise the right amount of money to make it go. So I would like to propose, then, that we, that we support the attached resolution designating Veterans Memorial Park as the site for the new band shell.
Second. All in favor signify by aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
So carries. The ayes have it. Thank you, and that was good, I'm glad you guys pulled that, and we've had a good discussion. I'm sure there's going to be more community, community input and more discussion coming up. And Councilmember Garcia, you actually have the next item.
Oh, okay.
Item 8.
Okay. I hope I can do this.
Yeah, just scroll down there. Give us a time, we're all learning on this.
Okay.
Go down there, punch it open.
So this is a public hearing to consider the preliminary and final plats for the Richfield Municipal Center and adjacent Ededia Park properties. Ededia is also known as Heredia, but it's really Ededia.
Okay, I mean, make sure we're doing it correctly.
As part of the construction of the new municipal center, the city undertook the platting of the municipal center property and the adjacent Ededia Park property. The platting process allows for the combination of various parcels that make up this half-block block area. Simplifies the legal description of the property and offered the property to review the, and offered the proper, and offered the opportunity to review the property's title and existing easements and encumbrances. Okay, let me try this now.
Just scroll down.
Okay.
So you, you use that scroller, use the scroll bar, and then just?
Which one?
This one right here.
Okay. Oh, okay. Oh, yeah, right, okay, exactly. Too much.
And then how do I get, how do I get smaller?
Yeah, go to the next page. Okay, that's good. Yeah. Okay. Okay. And so the background of this is, you know, after reviewing the initial title work for the involved properties, the city attorney found that the legal description of the land conveyed to the city was incorrect. So that's why we're doing this. It's been corrected, and this action took a number of months, but a judgment in favor of the city has been, now been recorded, and this action can move forward. Hennepin County is okay with this, they've reviewed the preliminary and final plats, and so has the city attorney. And so this is a public meeting, if anyone wants to come up and speak on the issue.
This is, the public hearing is now open. Would anyone like to come forward to speak on this particular item? Anyone come forward at all to speak on this public item?
I move we close the public hearing.
Second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. The public hearing is closed.
So I move to approve the resolution granting final approval of a preliminary and final plat for 6700, 6710, 6734, 6754, and 6758 Portland, the Richfield Municipal Center and at Ededia Park.
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Good. The next item is consideration of amendment to the planned unit development to allow a public school within an existing shopping center, the Hub Shopping Center, formerly Bally's Fitness Building. The owners of the Hub Shopping Center have applied for a major amendment to their approved planned unit development, called PUD, which would allow a charter school, Flex Academy, to operate within the former Bally's Total Fitness Building. The proposed school will serve up to 300 students, and that's from grades 6 through 12. The shopping center is considered legally non-conforming in regards to a number of performance standards. Examples are landscaping, impervious surface, parking lot screening. Historically, the city has required the additions of parking lot screening when new uses were been, have been introduced at the Hub Shopping Center. In the past, the city's Public Works Department has occasionally allowed required screening to be located within the public right-of-way. However, in this case, Public Works staff believes that it would be inappropriate because it would conflict with the future plans to reconstruct 66th Street. Alternatives were discussed at the Planning Commission meeting, and the applicant has proceeded to use large decorative planters instead of fixed plantings within the right-of-way. The Public Works Department has agreed that this proposal would be acceptable. The applicant has also submitted, submitted an initial traffic plan. This plan was developed with the help and input of city transportation engineer Jeff Pearson, and is considered to be a draft. Engineer Pearson has requested a follow-up evaluation of the plan once the school operations began. The background is the applicants for this land use permit amendment require compliances with current code standards. In this case, a large multi-tenant development, the city has typically required modifications to the site immediately adjacent to new tenant. In this case, however, it would be difficult to add parking lot screening on the perimeter of the property within the property boundaries, because it would result in an odd lot configuration that would create confusion in an already difficult parking lot. Totally agree with that. This application was considered by the Planning Commission on January 27. The Planning Commission recommended approval, conditioned upon finding an appropriate way to screen the parking lot and creation of a draft traffic plan that would facilitate safe pickup and drop-off locations. So with that, I will go ahead and move this item, so that we can have further discussion if staff has comments. I will make a motion to approve the attached resolution granting an amendment to the approved planned unit development, final development plan, and conditional use permit at 100 West 66th Street, known as the Hub Shopping Center, to allow a public school.
Second.
Other discussion, council?
I, I was out of town when this was, was in front of the Planning Commission also, but I went out and watched the Planning Commission's meeting with the representatives, and there was a lot of discussion, all open and quite good, and primarily directed at the parking and those issues, and it seems that they've come up with a good resolution. I also had an opportunity to speak with a representative of the, of the school and address some of my concerns in regards to impact on our local school district, and I was satisfied, and I think it's, it's a good addition to a vacant building in, in the city.
Councilmember?
I can say that, you know, I used to patrol around there, when Marshals was there, parking would- Parking was terrible in the back of that, and now that ain't there. Uh, where they're planning on parking it, I don't think there's going to be an issue. Even driving by nowadays, you don't see anything back there anymore, so.
Our folks from Flex Academy here, right in the front here. Would, would you like just to come up and say a few words or something? Discuss this about, tell us a little bit more. We've read, read the background of what the school is about. I think that, uh, the folks, uh, back at home would like to hear about that.
Uh, Mayor and, uh, councilmembers, my name is Bill Griffith. I met with a couple of the councilmembers and gave background. Uh, with me is Sue Norstad, who's the Chair of the, uh, toolboard. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and, and councilmembers. Uh, the proposed, uh, charter school, be known as, excuse me, be known as Flex Academy of Minnesota, uh, is, is a public charter school, which means this is tuition-free to the students who, who want to apply and, and, and enter. Uh, we're looking at, uh, starting the school, uh, trying to recruit students who would be in the, probably the sixth, seventh, and ninth grades to begin with, although we don't, we wouldn't deny admission to any other of, of those high school grades or middle school and high school grades. But, uh, the, the uniqueness, uh, the whole, the whole charge for charter schools is to try to create something unique or something different from the traditional brick-and-mortar, you know, school model. And how this school differs is a combination of, uh, having, uh, in-place certified teachers along with, uh, a great amount of content for the curriculum coming online or through, uh, online or digital, uh, media. Uh, and, uh, the provider for that is a, a well-known, uh, curriculum called K-12 uh, that, uh, many people, especially in the, uh, the homeschooling community may be familiar with, but it's also widely used across the world, uh, for international schools. And, uh, and it covers all your, your basic core, uh, elements for, you know, reading, writing, math, uh, history, and that, but then it offers a, a very broad range of extracurricular subjects uh, that are all delivered, uh, digitally. And, uh, we've met with the, uh, Department of Education. They're very enthusiastic about this, what's called a blended or flex model because the students are present, as they would be in a traditional school, five days a week, you know, roughly, you know, seven-thirty to three-thirty. But they have, uh, they have, you know, teachers and academic, uh, coaches in place, uh, and, uh, and they, it's a self-paced type of curriculum. So, if you have somebody who's, uh, you know, very accelerated in their learning, they can keep progressing and not be held back because the teacher has to basically sort of try to teach to the middle of the, of the, of the class that way. And, and those that are having difficulty and need the added, added, uh, support, uh, will have that direct contact with the teacher and probably be pulled, pulled aside, or a group of students pulled aside to get that extra, uh, help that they need, uh, to, you know, to meet their requirements. And, and they're judged, uh, just as any, any public school would, uh, their, their, you know, by state testing and that. So, they have to, have, you have to demonstrate acceptable progress and success, you know, in order to maintain your charter. And, uh, but that's the, sort of the, the ingredient of the, of the school.
I, I just have a quick question. First of all, this is very exciting, and I kind of like the idea of online learning. I've done a lot of it. I like it. Um, and I think for the right student, it's the right thing, those who can be self-motivated. But what about things like PE and stuff like that? Where do you do that, or how do you do that?
Well, we, actually, uh, this facility is, is quite excellent because having been the former Bally's Fitness Center, uh, there's, there's open space and room for, for PE. And we, we bring in the, in the, whatever type of instructors or, uh, curriculum, or, uh, faculty that we, we need to meet, uh, those types of things for PE. Now, may, will it be as, as broad range with as many, you know, elective, uh, sports and things like that as a, as a public school, uh, traditional public school? No, but we, uh, there'll be a number of clubs that will be established, again, based on what the students would like to do. We, we, you go out and find qualified people who could, could lead in those, those clubs. And, uh, I think off the bat, we've already had some discussion with, with, you know, some potential families that, uh, their main thing they said, will there be a soccer team? And I guess that's the hope, that, uh, we can start putting those things together, refined areas for practice and that type of a thing. But, uh, that certainly is, is of paramount importance.
We can work with our Park and Rec Department on some space.
There we go, yeah.
There you go.
I have a question. How, how many people serve on your board?
We have, we'll have five. We actually, we, we just lost, we have four people on the board currently, and we're, we're searching for our fifth.
Okay. And then I wanted to ask you, are you, will you have cafeteria?
You know.
Or how?
What they do for, for meals, true, now, uh, there's, across the country, there's a number of these blended schools or Flex Academies, and they've, they've, they've usually have worked for some type of a, a catered lunch type of program, uh, because there aren't usually, uh, cooking facilities within the school. But it's, uh, and it'd be, of course, be an approved, state-approved type of catering thing that, that make, make sure that, you know, any food that's brought to this service is safe and, and properly prepared and maintained.
Well, I, I think it's just, uh, an exciting concept, and, and I hope that when you get it off and running, you will invite us so that we can, you know, take a look at it.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Councilmember Sandel?
And it was good that you chose Richfield.
Yes, thank you.
Um, a couple of questions. One is, um, so if you have a student who decides what they really want to do for extracurricular is swimming or some other activity, football, I don't know what it might be, um, would you look at trying to get your kids in with the Richfield teams as well? The, the high school and the junior high?
Well, that, that'll be an issue that, uh, will probably have to be coordinated between our, our board and then, uh, the person that will, we're in the process now of selecting head of school or the principal position and that, and we, we work through those details there, but we'd certainly try to accommodate as much as possible, you know, the needs and the desires for the, the students. But we would want to be clear and transparent with the student and the parents up, up front in terms of just what programs we would have, so they would, you know, know upfront what, uh, what we can, uh, provide for them.
Because currently, we have, for instance, if I remember correctly, the girls' hockey team for Richfield, um, joined up with the Edina Hockey Team, you know, so that, so that all of the kids can do something that they're interested in.
Yes, I, I'm familiar with a number of cooperative programs, and we certainly would seek that out if, if, uh, if we can find a willing, you know, school to co-op, uh, co-op with.
And then the other comment I have, and that is, um, just that the landscaping additions, are those going to be paid for by the school or by the, um, by the hub?
It's, well, uh, of course, I'll, I'll toss that back to our, our architect and, and landlord. It's a joint, uh, it, they're working it out jointly, so that it would be covered, yes.
Okay. Um, my, my one comment is it's on the minimal side in terms of greenery, and I, we have excess parking. You've said we have excess parking. You know, I'm not sure what I would do because I'm not a landscape architect, but, um, this would be an opportunity to add more green to that, even if it was only a few islands with some trees on it, um, to that space.
And I know we're in, in, in discussion ongoing with the, between the landlord with the hub and, and the city to try to, certainly meet the, the city's, you know, uh, desire.
I noticed they had a bike rack.
But it was only three. We need more than three.
Yep. I think there's ten.
Okay.
Oh, it's ten. All right, that's better.
All right.
See, I warned them about, about your passion.
No, I read three. That's what I saw, so.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Any other discussion? Any other questions? Um, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, and welcome to Richfield.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember FitzHenry, you have the next item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, item I'm going to discuss is item number ten. And I'm sure we're going to need staff help on this one. There's a lot of stuff in this one. But I'll, um, what is under consideration, that we award a contract for the North Richfield Parkway project from sixty-fifth street to sixty-third street, and authorize, authorization for the city manager to approve changes in construction contract up to a hundred thousand. A proposal is for WSB and associate, associates to provide construction and engineering services. And I'm going to turn this right over to staff so they can, uh, kind of explain to us what it's all about, so.
Um, sure. I, I think if we could put on the graphic that shows the project up there. And I think, well, the thing that shows up right away is the Target stores. You can see from the aerial photograph there, it's the street that's shown, and maybe Jeff, you can kind of point that out. Oh, there we go. Uh, the, the streets in red that comes in front of the Target and Home Depot. Um, that section on the right-hand side, uh, is in blue, is the section of Richfield Parkway that was completed just this past summer. It's in, almost completed this past summer. You can drive on it, but there's a few details left to be done yet. So, we'll connect with that new section that was just put in place on the north, coming away from the park, and it'll go down two blocks. Um, the houses that are, will be removed yet this winter will be removed, and the road will be put in the, in the old roadway removed. And the new roadway and, and, uh, sidewalk facility will be placed, uh, you know, in front of, uh, that same alignment, along that same alignment.
Okay. I think that answers all my questions. I'm glad this is moving forward. We're going to get better curb appeal.
Councilmember Sandel?
I had a call just recently, uh, asking, I didn't drive over to look, um, whether any of the houses are gone, or what's the timeline for that?
No, the, the contract that was awarded last December called for the houses to be removed already a couple of weeks ago. And they're not going yet. The contractor, because of the weather, has been delayed and has pulled the permits and is ready to go, and we're expecting some warmer weather and should be coming out of there shortly.
And would that be all of them then, or are some being moved?
All of them, yes. No, I think all of, they're, they're going to all be moved or, or, almost all of them, I think, are removed. All of those that were going to be removed have been removed, and, and the rest of these now are demolition. Jeff, did you want it? Oh, there's one more to be moved. Okay. One of those yet remaining is to be moved yet.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and, uh, recommend it, and then we can have more discussion if we need it. So, uh, I'm recommending that we accept the bid minutes tabulation and award the contract to Northwest Asphalt in the amount of six-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars and four cents for North Richfield Parkway project, and authorize the city manager to approve contract changes under a hundred thousand without further city council authorization. Approve the hiring of WSB and associates to perform construction engineering services for North Richfield Parkway project for a fee not to exceed ninety-six-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars.
A second. Other council discussion? I'm, I'm excited to see this going forward.
Yeah, I, I'm just curious, and, and it's not for, for any devious reasons, but the hundred thousand dollars that, that is, that the city manager can approve. I just look at the bids, and they, for, for the amount of, of roadway and what was being built, they're, they're pretty, pretty widely apart, a million-one-twenty-eight versus the, the winning bid of six-fifty-two. And I, I, I'm just curious in terms of the hundred thousand, when I look at those bids, that hundred thousand brings it up to about the median. Are we anticipating that there's going to be change orders or something along the way to get that bid up closer to what is, is represented as a median on all these bids we got? Or what's the reason for the hundred thousand? Is that in anticipation that we're going to see some change orders from these people?
Uh, Madam Mayor, members of council, um, I don't anticipate there'll be a, a ton of change orders on the plan documents. The only thing I can anticipate that would, uh, probably increase a little bit, that, that cost is we're working with Home Depot, Target, and Ryan Development on, um, on re-aligning their access that's on the north end so that, um, that they'll have access to the frontage road, um, between the park and, and Home Depot, but they won't access the Parkway. It'll, access control makes it a little safer. Um, and they're favorable to that, and we, we're working through the easement documents. But because we didn't progress that, um, conversation with them far enough along to make it into the, to the construction documents, we anticipate that being a change order, um, to the construction documents. So, there'll be an additional, uh, little bit of construction to, to facilitate that driveway access change that's not in the actual construction documents and bid.
Okay, based on what we're doing, we have to pay to change the access for those three stores?
Right. It's, it's, it's really in our best interest to, um, to, to remove that driveway so you don't have two drives right next to each other. Um, and it's just, uh, you know, it's not going to be a, an elaborate cost. It's just a removal, uh, and replacement to the side.
Okay, and so, and you add, so that hundred thousand is built in to accommodate that? And you, you, you believe that that's going to be what, approximately what it'll cost?
No, I don't, I don't believe it'll be a hundred thousand. I think the hundred thousand is the upper threshold of what, uh, city manager and, um, uh, our city attorney and, and city manager can comment on that. But I believe that's the upper threshold of what they're, you know, what they would allow. I don't believe that this change order to, to accommodate that driveway access will, will be anywhere near a hundred thousand.
So, it's my understanding then.
And Public Works Director.
I just, just one other question, Mike. I'm sorry. Is that conversations with the stores hadn't reached the stage where they could have been incorporated into the bid process?
That was our hope, but there is, there was multiple parties involved. There's a, there's a separate landowner for Home Depot, then there's Home Depot Corporate, and then there's Ryan Development, which is the whole development, and then there's Target because that's their truck access. So, they're, with all those parties involved and the, all the routing that had to go through, um, it just didn't progress as fast as the construction documents. Um, and, and we needed to, um, basically bid the project by February to meet the, uh, the requirements in the, um, in the bonding, the, um, the assessment bond.
Okay.
And, um, Madam Mayor and members of council, I'd also like to point out that we have bid items for per foot of curb, uh, per ton of asphalt to make these changes. So, we have a, a contract bid item. It's just that we don't know exactly where it was going to be placed, and so we, that's why we have that in there. And in addition to that, we would usually, on something like this, there's going to be things that we don't expect. Whenever you open up the ground and you do some underground work, there's some unexpected things, and typically, maybe something like this ten percent or fifty thousand of that might have been normally expected. So, it's, it's to try to address some of these unexpected things as well as the expected one that we have coming.
And you don't want to bother us with the little stuff, right?
That's right.
City Attorney?
Um, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Elliott, I think maybe the reason for the hundred thousand too is an acknowledgement that that's the city manager's authority, um, to approve purchases under, by city charter, as long as they don't exceed a hundred thousand. So, I think that's, that may be the reason for the, the figure, um, in the, in the staff report.
Other comments or questions? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Um, Councilmember Sandel? Oh, no, excuse me, it's Elliott. Excuse me, I, I apologize.
To get away from.
I know, I'm just taking your stuff away. Sorry. Item eleven is, is.
This item for consideration is, uh, for the approval of the preliminary Lindell Avenue Improvement Plan. In two thousand twelve, the city was awarded a Department of Employment and Economic Development, shortened to DED, construction grant to be used for improvements to the pedestrian crossing at Sixty-Fourth Street and Lindell Avenue. In addition to the pedestrian improvements covered by the grant, the city explored additional low-cost changes that could be made to the corridor to implement recommendations in the Lakes at Lindell Connectivity Plan and the Bicycle Master Plan. It was determined that with striping changes, the cross-section of Lindell Avenue between Sixty-Third and Sixty-S sixth Street could be altered to include on-street bike lanes and parking lanes while still providing left-turn lanes and single-through lanes in each direction. This work can be done in conjunction with the pedestrian crossing or as a separate future phase of the corridor work. Preliminary plans for the crossing improvements labeled, labeled as the phased improvements includes, include a larger median island, landscaping in the median, and a push-button activated crossing light system. Plan for the full improvements include the lane reconfiguration achieved by restyping the corridor from Sixty-Third Street to Sixty-S sixth Street, and defined parking areas and greater analysis of the merge conditions entering the corridor will be reviewed as part of the final design, design. In two thousand twelve, the Richfield Community Development staff applied for construction grant funds for the Lindell Gardens project under the redevelopment grant program. The city was awarded a hundred thousand dollar grant, which was approved by city council and entered into agreement in November two thousand twelve. The grant requires a hundred percent match that will be covered privately with Lindell, excuse me, with the Lindell Gardens development work. Um, I think that's enough of the background. At this time, I would move to approve the Lindell Avenue Full Improvements Preliminary Panel as recommended by the Transportation Commission.
Second.
Second, and does staff want to show the picture of that, uh, some of those improvements?
Uh, sure, Madam Mayor, uh, members of council, this is the, um, the phased improvements. I'll just point out, um, the, maybe I'll use a pen. It looks nicer than my finger. Um, the pedestrian crossing at Sixty-Fourth, um, under the phased improvements only, to gain that width in the median would, um, eat up the left-turn lane that exists into the development site right now. Um, so that was perceived as a negative, uh, of doing only the phased improvements. Under the full improvements, you can see that because of the, uh, the lane reconfiguration, um, you gain that left-turn lane back. Um, and I'll also add, and, and I've got, um, extras to hand out, but, uh, what, last Wednesday on February fifth, uh, myself and Karen Barton, our Community Development Assistant Director, visited eleven businesses along the Lindell Avenue corridor uh, in areas where the striping changes are being considered. Uh, feedback was generally positive about the proposed changes, and I'll just highlight a few of the comments we received. Um, there were multiple favorable responses to the possibility of additional on-street parking. Um, and I'll, um, I'll, I'll, uh, stress that in the, the drawing here where we call up possi- And I'll, I'll stress that in the drawing here where we call up possible parking stalls would not necessarily mean that's where parking would be allowed. It would have to go through a further development of that sightlines and that type of thing. But in general, especially with the tenants of the strip mall at 65th and Lindell, that's pretty tight parking there, and I think there's additional restaurant use going in at the end. So, if they could get on-street parking, they would be favorable to that. There were multiple favorable responses to extended bike lanes south of 64th Street, continuing those bike lanes that exist further south to 66th. There were multiple favorable responses to projects, all projects, that improved the walking along and across the Lindell Avenue corridor. We did get a concern from one businessperson about the interaction. She was actually a bicyclist, and she would use the bike lanes, and she was concerned how the parking vehicles would cross the bike lanes, and would there be conflicts there? I'm personally comfortable with how that interaction exists in multiple areas around the metro area. And then there was one business owner concerned with the traffic consolidating from two lanes to one. And I think I had mentioned in our work session and also in your packet that our engineering study, our traffic study is, we found that the volumes that exist out there, that one lane in each direction is adequate. And again, the advantage of a restriping project is you're not tearing up the road. So, if, you know, in 10 years, we find that we do need that extra capacity, that could be a possibility to go back. We left layouts and contact information with all the businesses we visited, as well as attached to, you know, any businesses that weren't open at the time. This was a daytime visit, so most of them were there. And did not receive any further comments after our visit, so.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you.
I did have one comment.
Please.
And that is that we're doing what we started out doing, building a bicycle path, one or two or three blocks at a time, but it gets done.
It does, it does. And you have the next item, councilmember.
I do, thank you. Now, it's challenging here to see if I can get there. I did, all right. Okay, this is, we interviewed a candidate for one of the city advisory commissions, and I would like to move that we appoint Crystal Brocki to the Community Services Commission for a term expiring January 31st, 2017.
Second.
And then, if I may just briefly talk to that, we have any number of openings still available for people who have an interest in serving on a city commission. We have, one, two, three, four, we have seven openings on the Arts Commission. And you don't have to be an artist to do this, you just have to have an interest in arts. Maybe you wanna promote arts, and they don't have to be drawing. We have lots of arts, music, dance. We've got displays in our lobby for photographs, pottery, china, china painting, just all sorts of things, whatever would be of interest. So, if you have an interest, please consider applying. We also have additional openings on the Community Services Commission, another three, five openings on Friendship City, and two on the Human Rights Commission. So, if anyone at home has an interest in serving on a city commission, all of our commission members are always very complimentary of their service. They really appreciate, they seek to be reappointed because they've enjoyed their time helping Richfield. And so, anyone who has an interest, we encourage you to go on the city website and apply.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. City Manager's report.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the only thing I'd like to report on is that, you know, we're making some progress in terms of bills have been introduced, both in the House and I understand in the Senate now, for the 77th Street Underpass Bill. That's for the underpass, under Trunk Highway 77, at 77th Street. And we'll be doing everything we can to hope and see that that gets included somehow in the bonding bill. And I think this is our best opportunity to try and do that right now, and time will tell.
Yep, we're all excited about that. It's a lot of work that's been in there.
Lot of work.
Claims and payroll.
So, move.
Second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. At this time, we have item 15, which is a special city council closed executive session in the Babcock Conference Room, and it's regarding the city manager's annual performance evaluation. So, we will be excusing ourselves, and I'm sure that, but we will be reconvening. And the city attorney has additional information.
Yes, and Madam Mayor and council, just for the public record, the council is closing the meeting pursuant to Minnesota State Statute under the open meeting law, has the authority to close the meeting to evaluate the city manager's performance. And it's just required to state the statutory authority on the record here.
Okay, all right. We will be back shortly. Thank you. Thanks, all of you who came tonight.
Thanks for coming.
Yep.
Good to see you, thanks.
Hope you enjoyed it.
And so I've known him from the both sides of the fence and think I appreciated that he speaks his mind. Doesn't really bend toward the council. He lets us know exactly what his feelings are and his suggestions. So there's no doubt in our minds. And one of the biggest advancements I've seen the city, like I mentioned, we're on the bleeding edge almost of technology here. We're setting the pace. Just talked about the firefighters and the fire hydrants, the media access. And I've been really impressed with the City 101 and about how they evaluate your houses and that. I've referred more people to the website about certain items that you've already produced that have really got great praises because they understand how it works and they understand from somebody from Richfield. So I really appreciate that. And I think you're well deserving of what we're going to recommend a little bit here.
And I would say that our city manager, Steve Devich, exemplifies what I keep saying about Richfield. What Richfield does, it does well. And you certainly do well. Thank you. And I want to emphasize the thing that you're most proud of, which is that we have managed to sock away two million in, or will have by the end of the year, two million in reserved LGA, which was so undependable that we couldn't rely on it anymore. And our, what is our actual triple something A rating? Triple A? Double A? Which is an excellent rating. Helps us to get good rates on our bonds. And you do good work and we're happy to support you.
Well, I just want to say that, you know, when you look at the big picture and you look at where Richfield is, I mean, you've brought us here. You know, you have, you have worked very hard. Your commitment to your job and to serving the people of Richfield is evident in almost all of the, you know, you overcoming a lot of challenges and bringing us, you know, to, I, quite frankly, you know, and you know, with this connect and then the budget. What do you call that technology thing? You know, you've moved us into, you know, into the next level. And I think there's very few cities that can say that. But your leadership has been extraordinary. And I, I think that hopefully you will always continue to, to do the job you're doing now. Because we really appreciate you and we look forward to, to continuing, you know, what you've set. You, you set high standards for yourself and for this city. And, and that's evident and we appreciate it very much.
Everything that's been said plus. I think the, the thing I appreciate the most is, is, I mean, I've watched you manage and run this city as well as anybody possibly could for the last five years. And at the same time, you're accessible, you're responsive. When I need something, I have a question, I want to talk to a member of your staff, you, you always get back. It's, it's immediate. And it amazes me knowing how many responsibilities and duties you have and how well you're doing for the city that you can respond to, to questions I have that aren't always tremendously important. And I, I appreciate that as much as anything. Thank you.
Working on this underpass and this probably is one of our best years to get it. And the teamwork and camaraderie and everybody coming together to do this has just been really great. And the staff has been fabulous. And that goes to the culture here at the city. People come here and a lot of people don't leave here because this is a really good place to work. It might not be the highest paid place, but people want to stay here because this feels like family. We saw that when the dispatch was, was moved to Edina. I mean, that went seamlessly. But they don't care that they got paid more. They wanted to be here because of what this place meant to them. And so that speaks volumes to that. So at this time, I, the recommended action is that we provide a summer review, the city manager's performance evaluation for 2013. We've done that. And then by motion, adopt a resolution amending the employment agreement between the city of Richfield and the city manager, Steve Devich, for 2014.
So moved.
So moved. And for the discussion then, I will, I will tell you that the council has decided to give city manager Steve Devich the increase of 2.25 percent as all other employees. That would be $3,335.90 and an annual salary of $151,598.30. All their comments. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Question carries. Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, and thank you for the evaluation. Thank you for, for being an easy city council to work for. Because that means a lot. We have a good working relationship. When city managers or city administrators don't have a good working relationship with their city councils, everything suffers. The employees suffer, the city suffers. And it's just a miserable situation. But this is a great working relationship and I thank you for it. And I thank you for all the courtesies extended me.
And remember, you're not perfect and we know it.
Yeah. And I've got a handful of people that remind me that every day.
I'm sure, I'm sure.
So next time we do this, you know, maybe, maybe we'll, we'll go around and just say about your imperfections.
Take some shots. Yeah, exactly.
Exactly.
He's got a few on us too, though, I remember.
Yeah, wait, you know, I also like to thank Cheryl because I, I think she does a tremendous job in keeping, you know, things going. And, and she's a good collaborator and coordinator and whatever her title is. I, I think that's, you know, we're very lucky. And I know you're very lucky to have her.
Yeah. And she puts up with me. So then you have it.
Absolutely.
Exactly, exactly. Thank you. Seeing no further business, I call this meeting adjourned. Thank you. Hit the road, Pat.